All right, good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. It is 6:06 PM and I'm calling the Select Board to order. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance at 7:00. I move to enter into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the Chair so declares. And I move to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body.
Second.
To be roll call vote. Glenn?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
And I for myself, we are now in executive session.
Is he able to join up?
All right, good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, August 19th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. On Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube Channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin tonight with the ratification of the Town Manager's appointment of Sean Zerait to the position of Lieutenant of the Lunenburg Police Department effective August 19th, 2025.
Good evening, Board. Ms. Warren, I would like to recommend Acting Lieutenant Sean Zerait for the position of Lieutenant of the Lunenburg Police Department. Sean is a lifelong Lunenburg resident and attended Lunenburg High School. Sean has a bachelor's degree in Criminal Justice Administration from Columbia Southern University. Sean was first hired by the Lunenburg Police Department in 2009 as a reserve officer and later appointed full-time in 2011. Sean has also worked as a reserve police officer at Fitchburg State College from 2004 to 2009 and the Ashby Police Department from 2006 to 2009. Lieutenant Zerait was our senior sergeant in the department with over six years of supervisory experience. With his 20 years of experience in policing and his experience with the Lunenburg Police Department, I believe Sean is extremely qualified for the position of lieutenant. Sean is a valuable member of the Lunenburg Police Department. He has served as our first school resource officer here in town. He is also the current firearms instructor, field training instructor, alert, Alice instructor, and rad instructor. Sean has successfully completed the FBI Leader Trilogy Leadership Courses and he's also an active member in the community volunteering a lot with the club in Lunenburg and many other town programs. Sean is always willing to help anyway with all Lunenburg community events. Sean has been the acting lieutenant in the department for eight months and he has excelled at this position. Sean is an excellent employee and a true professional with a high work ethic that is always willing to help out for the residents of the town and the department. Sean always goes above and beyond to accomplish any task. I respectfully request that Acting Lieutenant Sean Zerait be appointed to the position of lieutenant. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I'll pass it off to the acting lieutenant now if you have any words you'd like to say.
I just want to say I'm very grateful for this opportunity. I don't take it lightly and I work with some great people, the chief, the officers, fire chief, and as well my family standing behind me. They're the ones who have been with me the whole time and my friends, so thank you.
Thank you. Well, congratulations on your appointment and I appreciate everything that you do and everything that you deal with on behalf of the town, truly, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I'll open it up to any questions or comments from the board?
Congratulations. I know it wasn't easy for you to do all that, to make the letter writing by the chief easy. I'm sure it was easy for him, but that took a lot of work and dedication on your part and, you know, we appreciate your commitment to the town.
Thank you.
I would like to also congratulate you and also thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll add my congratulations as well. I was here when you were appointed acting lieutenant and so it's nice to see you now officially become full-time lieutenant. So congratulations and thank you.
Likewise.
And the rest of the department as well. And your family?
My family right here.
For the support, I know, and again, congratulations.
Thanks.
To the Town Manager?
Yes, so I wholeheartedly support the chief's recommendation of your candidacy to this position and I am honored to call you not acting lieutenant, but lieutenant. It has been great to work with you over the past six months. I didn't get to see all eight, but I have been thoroughly impressed with what I have seen and to the department as a whole. I've been thoroughly impressed with the department as a whole. To your family, thank you for sharing your son and husband with us and with the community of Lunenburg who has benefited by his presence.
Thank you.
All right, awesome. Well, with that, I will move to ratify the Town Manager's appointment of Sean Zerait to the position of Lieutenant of the Lunenburg Police Department effective August 19th, 2025.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep, all right, so we're going to take a brief recess. We'll be back in just a couple All right, we are back in open session and up next we have a response to the Select Board Tax Investigation Report by Lynda Kadzka?
Shaika.
Shaika, okay, the principal assessor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll look for you. Want me to ski this up a little bit?
Sure, you can, sure.
All right, so through you, Mr. Chairman, to the board, the board has considered at a previous meeting the tax investigation report and what we wanted to do is while we're talking about the tax investigation report, what we wanted to do is address to the community all the things since that time that have been occurring to address the issues outlined in the directives that were issued by the Department of Revenue and the department and Board of Assessors has made some great strides in making some positive changes so that we ensure that something like this never happens again. So our principal assessor, Lynda, has put together a synopsis of what they have done, what they're working on, and what they're going to continue to be working on and we're joined by Sarah Kramer as well from the board.
Yep, okay. All right, in response to the Select Board Investigation Report that was received on May 20th, the assessing department had already begun addressing most of the issues outlined in the report. As of November 2024, the assessing office has been fully staffed with a Massachusetts accredited principal assessor, an experienced data collector that holds a Massachusetts appraisal state license, and an administrative assessing assistant with several years of management and customer service experience. At the time of the adjustment in land values and the substantial adjustment being made on the lakefront properties in fiscal 2023, the office was only staffed with two employees, one being the principal assessor, that was not a Massachusetts accredited assessor, and an administrative assessing assistant who had been employed for the town for 14 years. When the 2023 bills were sent out and the homeowners became aware of the changes in the valuations, the principal assessor was on family medical leave and the administrative assistant was handling the office alone during this crisis. Due to the public reaction to the fiscal 2023 bills, the entire Board of Assessors resigned and did not run for reelection. Additionally, as a result of the 2024 five-year revaluation and the fiscal 2023 lakefront crisis, the Department of Revenue established certification directives which must be completed by fiscal 2029. These certification directives are being addressed and have been incorporated into the assessing department responsibilities and will become annual procedures and policies as well. In response to these certification directives, the assessing department has undertaken the following, and I'm going to read you the DOR. The first directive is the cyclical re-inspective directive and they're asking us as for, in regards to cyclical inspections of properties, descriptions and over specific, excuse me, specified time periods should be implemented or if already underway should be continued. Assessors should maintain their cyclical inspection program such that all real property should have a visit history reflecting an inspection date no older than 10 years. Each personal property count must also be inspected every five years. And we have started implementing this by inspecting 10% of the properties every year, which is recommended by the Department of Revenue. The assessing department has initiated this program and will continue to inspect properties going forward. Personal property is also inspected by our contractor, RRC, when the forms or lists are received every March and personal property has to be reviewed every five years. A formalized cyclical program is also being conducted right now by Vision Appraisal and we have a three-year contract which started in fiscal 2025 to inspect 500 parcels each year. All properties with a visit history inspection date of 10 years or later are being inspected and this will be a continual effort to ensure that all real property is inspected every 10 years. In addition, when the data collector and the principal assessor conduct field inspections, the data on the record card is verified and counts towards a cyclical inspection. The next DOR directive is the income and expense data directive and they are requesting the assessors should maintain a program of annually mailing income and expense forms to all income producing properties and these will include multifamily apartment buildings, mobile home parks, commercial and industrial classes with a second mailing to follow up with non-filers. And we have actually, in response to this income and expense data directive, we mail out the income and expense forms in January every year. We have also started a second mailing program to follow up with non-responders to the first mailing. The third DOR neighborhood directive is as follows. The assessors, it's a neighborhood review directive. The assessors, it's a neighborhood review directive. Assessors should review all residential neighborhood delineations in accordance with the indicated land value and adjust them as needed by the next certification. Consideration should be given to conducting a neighborhood study for all residential parcels and market areas. Neighborhood 3, which is the largest neighborhood and the waterfront neighborhoods, will be annually reviewed and refined by the assessors. We have actually, are in the process of implementing the neighborhood review directive. And a group of community volunteers reviewed the existing neighborhood and determined they hadn't been updated in 15 years. The definitions of the neighborhoods will need to be addressed with the scope of work. The assessing department has developed an RFP to find a suitable contractor to assist with this directive. The next directive is the land schedules directive. And the DOR is asking that the assessors should review land values and adjust the land valuation system as needed in a uniform and equitable manner. Sales of water influence parcels. And parcels with view adjustments must be monitored annually to support all land values and adjustments. Condition factors should also be reviewed to be sure that these are applied consistently. Reasons are noted and supported with the market sale data. Assessors will need to review their pricing of unbuildable waterfront parcels. And the assessing department, I've already actually started reviewing all the fiscal year sales. And based upon these statistics, the land values will be adjusted based upon this data with the assistant of Vision Appraisal, who is actually doing our interim adjustment process. There are many parcels that are receiving a land condition adjustment, and we are currently reviewing those. The next directive is the personal property second home directive. The Department of Revenue is requesting the certification review indicated that a new analysis of residential second home personal property must be conducted for valuation of these accounts for the next certification. The assessors' office should conduct a review of the parcels to ensure that the parcels are correctly listed as second homes and that all second homes are included in the annual forms of list mailing. The assessors' office in 2023 categorized all known second homes and reviewed them to determine whether they're year-round or seasonal without a permanent heat source. And a seasonal designation was developed for seasonal homes. All known second homes receive a forms of list mailing. The completed forms of lists are given to RRC, which is our personal property contractor, and they generate the personal property values. The personal property exemption in Lunenburg is currently $2,500. And what this means is that any personal, any property with a personal property less than $2,500 is exempt from the personal property tax. The next DOR directive is the sales verification directive. And they are asking that the assessors' office should begin a formal verification program of all sales that occur in the community, including a full physical field measures and inspections. All permits should also be field inspected as conducted, as conducting a full physical reinspection would count towards a cyclical reinspection program. The assessing office has actually started the sales verification process. We did hire a permanent part-time data collector who conducts daily inspections for permits and sales verifications. And the formal sales verification program was established shortly after I started in July of 2024, and it will be ongoing. The data collector reviews all the sales weekly and schedules appointments with property owners to conduct property inspections. The inspections verify that the data on the property card is correct. And monthly sales are also reviewed with the multiple listing service data and through inspections. The multiple listing service also provides photographs and data about the property, which assists the data collector in verifying the property's data. A postcard requesting the inspection is mailed to new homeowners requesting an inspection appointment. And if there is no reply, then a sales questionnaire is sent requesting verification of the data by the homeowner. We have some other directives, the interim year adjustments that the DOR has requested. They are requesting that the property valuation adjustments should be made annually as needed and every year in the interim years between the community's five-year certification cycle to ensure that all assessments reflect full and cash value as required by general law, Chapter 59, Section 2A. Assessments should be equitable and consistent within and between all property classes evidenced by accepted mass appraisal methodologies. Interim year adjustment programs may be performed in-house or contracted out using professional assistance as your staffing situation dictates. We have currently reviewed all sales annually to verify if any adjustments in the assessing valuations are required. And Vision Government Solutions has been contracted to review and adjust interim adjustments as required. The next directive is the chapter land directive. The DOR has requested that all classified chapter land should be inspected in the field or through the use of orthophotos to ensure that the actual current use meets Mass. General Law, Chapter 61, 61A, and 61B requirements for the respective requirements for productive land, actively devoted land, and usage as allowed per each chapter. Each parcel should be reconciled with the annual application and use classification, the CAMA system. And all files should be reviewed to ensure a property recorded classified tax lien is on record and that reconciles to the classified usage and the current owner's name. The assessing department has already reviewed the chapter land applications for 61A, and the inspections have been conducted to ensure that all the regulations of 61A land are met. Our next focus will be to review all the 61B properties and then conduct inspections to each site. Subsequently, a full review of all chapter land parcels is in process to ensure that each property also has a tax lien. And the last directive requested by the DOR is the open positions directive. And any and all open positions in the assessors' office and on the Board of Assessors should be filled as soon as the town can locate qualified candidates. All open positions have been filled in the assessing office. The assessing office is actually fully staffed for the first time in three years. These positions include a part-time data collector, a full-time administrative assessing assistant, and a full-time principal assessor. There is currently an opening for the Board of Assessor member, which has been vacant and is open since the election in May. So we are seeking another member. In conclusion, I just wanted to note that the current assessing department staff were not employed at the time of the lakefront tax crisis. The Board of Assessors was newly elected after the former Board of Assessors resigned. And the current assessing staff has worked diligently to reorganize the office, follow up and update many of the necessary assessing functions that were not completed due to staffing issues. The assessing staff also focuses on providing excellent customer service to regain public trust of the residents. As an example of the progress that we have achieved, the total number of real estate tax abatements have actually declined over the past two years. We had 37 abatements last year for fiscal 2024, excuse me, 2025. And there was 37 for 2020. So I'm sorry. There was 42 for 2020 fiscal 2024, 37 for 2025. And that was in comparison to 427 real estate and personal property abatements in fiscal 2023. There will definitely need to be a continued effort by the assessing staff to fulfill these certification directives. And the assessing office will need to, will need the continued support and funding by town management to ensure that these are being conducted annually. And I'd like to thank you and answer any questions that you may have.
Sure. Thank you so much, Linda. First to the town manager, would you like to respond?
Yes, so I want to publicly thank Linda, the entire team in the office, and the Board of Assessors. I often remark to Linda that the town of Lunenburg didn't get here in a day with this issue because she is so wanting to fix everything yesterday. And it's going to take a while to unpack. But we are certainly on the right track. I think that this thorough write-up just shows all of the things that we have been working towards to check things off. I know that you have the perseverance and diligence to drive through this wall at whatever cost. But I just wanted to publicly thank you and acknowledge the work that you and your team have been doing.
Oh, thank you.
Of course, thank you. Any questions, comments from the board?
I'll just comment, thank you for sharing your unique skill set with the town of Lunenburg. We certainly are appreciative of that. And I know it's not always easy to be a municipal employee, so thank you.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that.
I would like to thank you as well, Linda. I am the liaison from the select board. So I haven't been at, to any of the actual Board of Assessor meetings, but I've watched you on YouTube, watched all the meetings. And I think the Board of Assessors and you, and your team are doing a great job. I also wanted to give a shout out to that you did, you're meeting up with the senior center and doing those meetings too for the exemptions. I think that's important too. I just think it's a great team. I think Brian and Sarah are doing a great job. And I think for the public, please watch some of their meetings. I think it would be great to work with Brian and Sarah. And it's a great opportunity. There's a seat open, so hopefully somebody jumps on it.
So I also want to say thank you, having been here for the lake waterfront tax crisis of 2023. I know what the current board walked into. As you said a couple of times, the staff, the board, it was all different. It's all turned over. But the current board and the current staff have done a lot of work. I think you've made great strides in regaining the public trust. I know I used to watch those Board of Assessor meetings religiously when this was getting cleaned up. I now feel I don't need to for quite some time now. So I just want to thank you for all the work that has gone into cleaning this up. And I did have one question, and it's mostly just to, because I anticipate that someone out there may be thinking of this question. The cyclical reinspection directive, when you say that 10% of properties will be inspected each year, can you just expand upon what do you mean by inspection?
We are required, like I said, we, to do, the DOR recommends 10%. So what that means is we actually notify the public. So we're sending out a postcard right now. If their house is on the list to be inspected, if they're within that period, we notify them by a postcard. And Vision Appraisal will show up. And he'll start out doing an exterior inspection. He has identification. He'll leave a door hanger if no one is there. If someone does not want an interior inspection or doesn't want an inspection period, they can go just call our office and we put them on the list not to inspect. So and if, if no one's home and his name is Josh, who's currently doing the inspections, he'll leave the door hanger. And it's just to request a call for an interior inspection. It's totally up to the public whether or not they want. We would like that because it helps us verify the data just to make sure it's correct. And that's one thing that we do want to stress to residents is to check your property record card because your tax bill actually comes from the assessed value. So it's, it's good to just check that data. We encourage people every year to look at the record card. And if there is a question, call us. We'd be glad to come out because most of the time, you know, our data was great, but it's always good to, we check the measurements when we go out. We, we go through the, the front and the back of the property record card. So, so that's kind of what the cyclical is.
Thank you, because I know the, the question about outside interior inspection has, has come up in the public before, so thank you for it.
I do see that Sarah has her hand raised. I don't know if she wanted to just jump in real quick?
Yes, I, I did. I actually wanted to point out, Linda explained that perfectly, what happens in those inspections. But I just want to point out that those types of inspections are supposed to happen in interim years between every five-year inspection we're supposed to. And it has always been the rule for as long as there, I know there's been assessment, that 10% is supposed to be looked at each year. The fact that residents aren't aware of that and people have lived in Lunenburg longer than I have never had that cyclical inspection just shows how much groundwork Linda is having to do to make up for things that hadn't been occurring in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So just to, for the public, to expand upon the question by a member, Emma Key. When you, if you're not granted access for an interior inspection, you make some assumptions, correct?
Yeah.
And so you are assuming the, what the house quality is or what level it's up to based on things you're seeing. So sometimes you're assuming that things are improved to a level that from the outside, it looks like would be the case. But you're making an assumption by not being allowed in that might be affecting the tax bill in the wrong way.
Exactly.
Right? So, so I just wanted to emphasize that point, that you're, you're not there to make the Taj Mahal out of every property in Lunenburg, but to value it for what it is. And without seeing it, you don't necessarily have that data point.
It can be difficult. And we, we also check open.gov for permits. And we do review the MLS, which actually does provide photos. But if there's no recent sale, it's difficult for us to, to make a determination. So we do encourage people, it's really important to, to check the property record card. And, and again, you know, we're, we're very fair and equitable. When we do the inspection, we review everything. And, and that's one thing is it's, it's, I think people worry that, to have the assessor come out. But sometimes it's a good thing because if there's an error, we find it and we correct it.
Any other questions? Well, I just want to thank you as well, you and your team. You know, I think it's well established that you guys inherited a mess. But your dedication and commitment to fixing it and making sure that processes are in place so that it doesn't happen again. And your commitment to rebuilding that trust with the public is self-evident. And based on conversations that I've had and the things that I've heard, I think it's truly working. And I think you guys have succeeded in that. So thank you so much for all the work that you do and for coming in and preparing this presentation for us in the community tonight, Linda.
Okay, thank you very much. It's nice to meet all of you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, so we will jump down to appointments. We have two that are here in the room tonight. So we can do the appointment of Paulette Beardmore and Jean Dupree to the Lunenburg 300th Anniversary Committee. If you guys would like to come up and just introduce yourselves and let us know why you're interested in serving on the committee. I know you guys have been active and participating with the committee before and I believe have volunteered as well. When I was at the vendor fair, we had a booth and I think you guys were there. So you guys are already involved in the process.
Good evening. Speak. My name is Paulette Beardmore. I'm a Lunenburger. I was born here many, many years ago. And my family came here in the late 29, almost 30, and bought a, a 40-plus acre farm with a house, a barn, and multiple ancillary buildings for $6,800, believe it or not. And I'm one of seven, the seventh of seven. And my father never had a dime to rub together till the land was developed and he stopped farming. So that's all of Fairview Road, down West Street from Lomond Street Road to where you stop the hill. He owned all that land. Now there are multiple houses on it. So in my life, my father served the community. I was talking to, to a local neighbor the other night of talking about my dad had a thing, like a banner on him. And during the war, he was a scanner for people who didn't cover their windows during the war. So that's where our, as far back as I wasn't even born yet, serviced to the town. My maiden name is Shapton Lane. My brother Ray serviced the town for a thousand years. My son was on the school committee. I was on the school committee for many years during the 80s. I served on not one, but two bylaw revision committees when we were trying to find out how many of these excavators in Lunenburg and how much land they owned and where it was and if it was being run properly. was, and if it was being run properly. I lived on the Cape for a few years and loved every minute of my living there, but always missed Lunenburg and came back. We went in '16 and came back just two years ago. So, I was asked if I was interested in it, of course I'm interested in it, my husband and my son were in the play for the 250th, I was pregnant for my second child then, and was not that much involved, he was soon to be born, but anyway, I'm happy to serve and do what I can, because this is my home.
Awesome, thank you so much. Jean?
So, my, my family's history does not go back quite as far. But, no, we moved here in 1956, so, you know, I completed first through 12th, and, you know, my mother was the treasurer of the Historical Society for many years. My first husband was a Lunenburg graduate, he went into the military, so I spent a few years in Japan, Korea, and San Antonio, and then when my mom passed away, my dad asked if I would come home, and my family would just say, sir, yes, sir. So, we came, I came back in 94, so my daughter got to attend all of the same schools I did, and she graduated in 2006. I ended up following my mother's footsteps, I was treasurer for the Historical Society for 17 years, and worked locally at Workers Credit Union, I am still there. It's funny, I started my career there in 1972, and then they brought, they took me back, which was interesting when I came back in 94. I've been on the executive, not executive, I'm sorry, Economic Development Committee for, I think, three years now, so it's probably about time for me to move on. I did drive a tractor, my father was very involved with the 275th, I got to drive a tractor, if you want pictures of proof, I do have that at home, so, of course, I know Deb Lincoln very well, she graduated a year ahead of me, you know, plus some of the others that are, Kathy Clark is also on the board, are on the committee as well, so it's my home.
Awesome, well, thank you both, I'll open it up.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments from the board, if there are any?
Thank you for coming forward, you're two amazing candidates, and, you know, I could listen to your stories all night, all night long, the, you know, the resource that the two of you provide is, is, you know, unmatched, but thank you for your willingness to to share it and volunteer your time.
I have a correction, pardon my dementia, it's my age, but it wasn't the 250th that my son, and it was the 270th.
Seventy-fifth.
Yeah, because I'm old, I'm going to be 80, but it's, I'm not that old. My child, 50 years ago, well, he is in his 50s, but it wasn't him, it was the second one.
Thank you, Jean, thank you, Paulette, I think you both provide unique perspectives that I think will help the committee a lot, and I appreciate you volunteering.
Thank you for volunteering, and thank you for sharing your stories, I can only imagine how the town has changed since you've been here, and I'm sure you have many, many stories, more stories to tell, but again, thank you for volunteering and willing to participate.
Can I just add a little addendum that you, I'm happy to share with you, my husband is in the process of upgrading the history from the 50th to the 200th, 250th to the 300th. He's been working at it for a year and a half, and has another year to go before it will go to publication. He's interviewed just about everybody in town, police, the history of the police station, what changed, the fire, but recently, because my dad was a farmer in Lunenburg for so many years, we have been very attached to Marilyn McMillan, who is a proctor, one of the multi, multi-thousands of proctors in Lunenburg, and we took her around for a morning, we picked her up at 10:00, and we stopped at 1:30 to take her to lunch, where she was almost exhausted, she's approaching 89 years old, and her history is that when she was a child raised on West Street, at the pinnacle of West Street, from Sunny Hill to Hollis, where all that U-shaped development is, that was all her father's land, and there were close to 50 farms in this town, some of them being milk processing area, but all related to farming, which is just amazing. Well, stupidly, we didn't take her, you know, we're, we're not of that generation, you know, so Billy, my neighbor, Billy Tyler here, said, can I borrow the tape, and we're, oh my God, so we, so we couldn't finish the town, so we did, oh, I'm sorry, Electric Avenue over, you know, all that, end of Lunenburg, and her mind is like a steel trap, she was born here, she was educated here, she married a farmer here, who was a Canadian descendant who came to help, an ill farmer, Winnie Brown, off of Leominster Road, where she still lives, and she knows the plot of land, who their children were, who they married, where they are, blah, 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 but now she has the tape, and she's going over the original notes, and so it will be a treasure to this town to think, I mean, I remember as a kid, multiple, but not anywhere near as many as her, it's incredible how this town has grown, and she's kept up with the development of all these farm properties, you know, how many houses are in them, and how many families are in them, and blah, 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 blah. If you want a piece of us for anything in the town history, she's on Leominster Road, McMillan, Cherry Hill Farm, you see the big line, anyway. Just thought I'd mention it to you, because she's an incredible human being, incredible human being.
Thank you.
All right, hold on one second.
Wait, don't leave.
Okay, I move to appoint Paulette Beardmore and Jean Dupree to the Lunenburg 300th Anniversary Committee.
I'll second that motion.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, the motion passes unanimously, congratulations, you guys have been officially appointed. Make sure you guys get sworn in.
Yes.
And with the town clerk, I'm assuming you guys know that.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and the next meeting, I think, is next, next Monday, right?
Yeah, the 20th.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a question to Mrs. Beardmore?
Sure.
Will you be providing a photograph of your son in that play for the occasion? I think that that should have been a contingency.
I, I don't know, there's one somewhere.
Yeah.
I will look for it.
Thank you.
My husband and my son were in it.
Wonderful.
Going right through the center.
Yeah, you have to find that, yeah. All right, have a good night, guys. Okay, announcements, I have two, let me just pull them up.
I don't know if Phil wants to hang for the announcement.
Um, no, it's all right. Okay, there will be a Touch a Truck event this Friday, August 22nd, from 12:30 PM to 2:30 PM at the Department of Public Works at 520 Chase Road. This exciting community event gives kids the chance to get up close, sit in, and explore a variety of vehicles and equipment, from fire trucks to police cruisers to construction rigs and more. In addition to the town vehicles, the Lunenburg Water District will be present, as will Proctor Landscaping with a truck, Hollis Hills Farms will be bringing a tractor, the mobile studio from Fitchburg Access will be on site, Powell will be bringing a truck, Aldrich will be providing a tow truck, Keating will be bringing a loader, there will be lots of food at the event with donuts donated by Dunkin' Donuts and Dippin' Donuts, the Salvation Army canteen will be serving hot dogs, there will be pizza from Bad Larry's, et cetera, et cetera. It's going to be a great community event, and again, that is this Friday, August 22nd, from 12:30 PM to 2:30 PM at the DPW, 520 Chase Road. And save the date and mark your calendars for 25 Years of Memory, a community commemoration of a local treasure, Waylon Park. The Historical Society is going to be holding this event Saturday, September 13th, from 12 to 2 at the Historical Society, there'll be a lot of Waylon memorabilia on display, and the opportunity to share your memories from the park. The Police Department will be selling special commemorative Waylon badges, and you can get a picture with the Waylon clown for $5. There will also be a book signing for the Waylon Park Images of America book, so stay tuned for more information on that.
I did have a announcement, that the library is hosting a story and meet and greet with Dr. Jody Fortuna, the new superintendent of schools, it's tomorrow, Wednesday, August 20th, from 1:30 to 2:30 PM.
Thank you. And I do also want to mention, I missed out on one thing for the Touch a Truck, there's also going to be a Stuff the Cruiser Drive for school supplies, so if you're able, please pick up some school supplies to help fill the cruiser. All right, any other announcements? Okay. Public comments, are there any other public comments from the board? Any public comments from the public this evening? Mr. Burden?
Yes, hello, I'd like to address the town for all the issues that have been going on with my family, it's been pretty incredible, and a conversation that I had with Ms. Warren just the other day was incredible, I've never seen anything so unprofessional that it was just concerning to us, that we wanted to raise it to the select board, we've heard that there's multiple issues going on in town, and this is why we're being attacked. I think that the select board understands, Mr. Warren, Mrs. Warren and Caesar have had a conversation with us back six months ago, didn't do anything, just sat there and listened. We don't understand why the town doesn't step up and talk and mediate what we've gone through and what we've discussed, except for they will put pictures and and comments in face, on Facebook, which we don't have access to, a town-only Facebook page that we don't have access to, however, public figures, meaning police officers that don't live in town, have access to that page and watch the postings go on. It's incredible to us, how that can occur, how do you give police officers access to a Lunenburg-only page when they don't even live in town? Or are they watching it during their, their, you know, office hours, when they're on duty? That could be happening as well. I think the town needs to understand what we've been going through, that the expense that the town is spending at coming after us, and and trying to document us to be the individuals that we are not, and and instructing the narrative, and basically following, making a narrative out of my family to the abuse that we've gone through, calling us idiots on Facebook. Does the town and the select board members think that is proper? That's what I'd like to ask, and I'd like a response from that, you can't even respond to that? Dead silence, dead silence from the board. Why? Why, when we've raised these concerns continuously? Can someone please speak?
Mr. Burden, so this is your public comment, okay, this isn't a conversation?
No.
Would you like to continue with your public comment?
It's a question to be addressed on our letters that we have sent to the town manager, they do not get replied to, multiple public records requests that we have very concerns with, why am I listed on a danger list, that no one can tell us why, and no one can tell us no documentation thereof, because it was a setup from day one, and we have documentation and evidence of such, but now the town is defamed, blackballed, and trying to remove us from our house and our family. My wife and three kids have to live at home by themselves, while I had to live two hours away, just to avoid the wrath from the town, and the harassment, and the intimidation, and the stalking events, that the police have looked the other way, because they're helping individuals, they're protecting these individuals. Why? And why doesn't the town respond? You all sit there with your mouths quiet, with a dumb look on your face, and don't say anything. Why? Why? Please help us.
Mr. Burden, this isn't a conversation, you are making a public comment, would you like to continue with your public comment?
I have no more public comment, but it is a question that I'd like the board to answer, you can answer it not here tonight, why don't you answer it via email, why don't you answer it via a letter, why don't you respond to our public records request on a timely fashion, and provide us the records that we want, so we can get to the bottom of this and end it? It's been a 10-year situation, we've been attacked in town, like, you basically take someone, and they get attacked, a police officer tries to cancel an ambulance, I end up in two hospitals, why? And then I continue to get attacked, is that like the same thing you would do to anybody else? Why? Would you take someone that's gotten raped and do that again to them, and continuously harass and provoke someone? Why do these things occur in the town of Lunenburg? It's a question for everybody, you don't have to answer that, Caesar, or anybody else on the board if you don't want to, but we'd appreciate a letter and try to help, help us understand why, why this all occurs, we don't understand it, honestly. It's to silence, silence us. Why? Because we've raised concerns to the town, we've raised concerns to the town of individuals in our, in our town, and nothing but attacked, we're like the Turtle Boy of Lunenburg without a murder for Karen Reed's trial, that's exactly what the situation is.
All right, Mr. Burden.
We've had videotapes.
Mr. Burden, you've gone on for three minutes.
We've had videotapes.
Mr. Burden, you are done.
We've had videotapes modified.
Mr. Burden.
We've had a lot of things go on that no one is aware of.
Mr. Burden, have a good night, your public comment is over, good night. All right, continuing on, appointments, ratifications, and resignations, we have, let's see, ratified the town manager's appointment of Victoria Ledger as videographer, effective August 20th, 2025.
Thank you, a little bit about Victoria, she has a master's in integrated media arts from Anna Maria College, and a bachelor's in video and photographic art with a minor in creative writing and media studies, she has experience creating video content for Anna Maria's art department, she has taught at the graduate level, teaching video studio productions, she's proficient in video editing, camera shoots, and TV productions, and I think that she's going to bring a wealth of experience, and to help fill some gaps due to some recent vacancies in that position.
Awesome, any questions, or is there a motion?
I'll move to ratify the town manager's appointment of Victoria Ledger, is that right?
Ledger.
As videographer, grade three, step three, effective August 20th, 2025.
I'll second that motion.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, the motion passes unanimously. Okay, up next is the appointment of election workers, and terms to begin September 1st through August 31st, 2026, and just note that that, no, it's actually 2026, I know it says 2025 on the agenda, good catch, though, and there are eight, so Glenn Reinhardt, Republican, 53 Pearl Street, as the warden, Judith Halligan, Republican, 29 Elizabeth Street, deputy warden, Kathleen Pliska, Democrat, 337 Waylon Road, clerk, Judy Haley, Democrat, 184 Highland Street, clerk, Susan Andrews, Democrat, 81 Horizon Island Road, inspector, Joanne Bergeron, Democrat, 306 West Townsend Road, deputy inspector, Jane Ramley, Republican, 450 Leominster Road, inspector, and Donna May, parisanship not noted here, 277 Highland Street, deputy inspector. Any questions on any of that, or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint election workers as red.
I'll second that motion.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, the motion passes unanimously. Okay, and up next, we have a couple of resignations to acknowledge, so the first is Max Anderson, equipment operator, effective August 8th, 2025, I can just read them all, Matthew Allison, planning board member, effective July 30th, 2025, and Joseph Hurley from the Sewer Commission, effective August 13th, 2025. Okay, moving on to the town manager report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's been a while since we last convened, so it's a little bit long for updates this evening, so I had previously reported about some programs that were available through National Grid, and we are going to be working on a portfolio prioritization plan with National Grid through Mass Save, this is a high-level analysis of buildings within the portfolio, and from this we'll receive a prioritized list for electrification, a report, presentation, and next steps, we're looking at Turkey Hill, middle high school, library, primary school, public safety building, DPW, Town Hall, Ritter, and Eagle House, TCP has also been recommended, but we're talking to them about whether or not that's appropriate considering the decommissioning work, this comes at zero cost to the town, this is 100% being funded through the utility, why National Grid when they're not our utility, some may wonder, Unitil is just too small to have a team to operate in the space, so National Grid takes that on for some of the smaller utilities, but we're excited for the partnership and to develop a plan for reduced energy usage in these buildings. Nishoba Valley EMS funding, thank you to the entire legislative delegation for their efforts in securing $5 million in funding for the area's fire and emergency medical services, this funding, of course, is intended to address the costs associated with the closure of the Nishoba Valley Medical Center, Chief Sullivan joined regional chiefs at the ceremonial bill sighting in Beacon Hill, I believe that was last week, we do not know yet how these funds will be distributed particularly, other than that they're going to be distributed through the Department of Public Health, but how they can be expended, what they can be used on the parameters around that, we haven't seen that yet. What we will say, though, is- say, though, is at this point with the funding not being secure year over year, although that's the intent, I wouldn't want to put any operations on this funding. Open space recreational plan has been extended, so thank you to the Lunenburg Open Space Committee who applied for and obtained a three-year extension on the town's open space and rec plan. These expire every 10 years, so this means instead of having to complete a whole new plan, we can use the current plan and continue to apply for and be eligible for grants through June 2029. So thanks particularly to Mike Toohill, the committee chair, for your efforts in this area. The senior means tested tax exemption. You've heard us talk about this a lot. So the assessor and board of assessors presented on the senior means tested tax exemption on August 13th. The goal of this tax exemption is to provide property relief to older homeowners and help them to be able to remain in Lunenburg. This is an exemption for seniors who are granted the Circuit Breaker income tax credit and meet certain income and asset criteria. If you were not able to make that meeting at the Eagle House on August 13th, there is the 22-minute video available on YouTube. If folks don't have access to YouTube, please call our assessor's office. The information is also available online. But the deadline is fast approaching of September 3rd. So if you think you want to learn more, there's a lot of places that you can look for more information on this. The Nishoba Associated Boards of Health nursing hours remain on pause through the months of September and October. Due to staffing issues, they are hoping to have a new nurse onboarded and oriented in time to resume those hours in November. If folks do have public health nursing questions, in the meantime, they can contact the Associated Boards of Health and they can put you in touch with somebody. They're also participating in a community health survey for the region. We are going to be posting this on our page over the next few days. We had a lot of traffic and we didn't want to clutter our social media and website page, but we're going to be posting this survey. It takes about under 10 minutes. They're looking for data about the overall community health so they can approach issues from a regional level. If you're really eager to hop on and take it right now, you can go to the Nishoba Associated Board of Health webpage and find that link for the survey. Department head goals and objectives. Since the select board and I have established goals and objectives, we've now taken those to department heads and rolled them out for the fiscal year. Their goals and objectives are based on the overall goals and objectives of the town as well as items that are being initiated at the department level. As I understand, this is a new endeavor for department heads. They haven't participated in annual goal-setting before, but we're excited to start the process. Mosquito updates. So the town of Lunenburg had the fortunate or unfortunate designation of being the first community in the state with a animal that passed away, and that animal that passed away did have West Nile virus, although I have not seen whether that was the cause of death. That animal, which was a goat, resided on Goodrich Street. Central Mass mosquito control has been sampling mosquitoes in that area. There have been no mosquitoes in that direct vicinity that have come back positive. However, mosquitoes sampled from other parts of the town have come back positive for West Nile virus. So we know that there's mosquitoes in the area with West Nile virus. We're advising all residents to take appropriate cautions, be mindful especially when out after dusk, get rid of standing water, wear appropriate clothing and take appropriate measures. Town offices will be closed this Thursday, August 21st, from 1:00 to 4:00 for our annual employee appreciation event, at which time the special merit award will be announced, merit awards will be announced for the first time. We're going to have those awardees back before the select board at a future meeting to recognize them in front of the whole community. The awardees don't know who they are, so I'm excited to give them those awards on Thursday. But I really want to thank the community for nominating so many folks. I had an incredible amount of nominations to consider, and if I could give them all away, I would. So. Representative Scarsdale reached out to let us know that the Lunenburg Public Schools is receiving a grant through the MassCyber Grant Program in the amount of $24,234 to upgrade three end-of-support switches that will enable patches and more advanced security protocols to be implemented and also prevent some threats. So that's great. External funding is always great, as is our Chapter 90 final apportionment, which our final figure for FY '26 is huge, $883,172.18, which is well over what we were expecting at town meeting at $690,000 and change, which is over the normal apportionment. So I think we have a lot of work that we can do with those additional funds, so they won't go to waste, but glad to see it. All right, project updates. Following the joint meeting of the select board and the municipal building design committee, we've received some additional information on very rough potential costs about next steps that were discussed. Taylor &amp; Burns did provide a ballpark estimate of around $80,000 for the town hall and Ritter Building next steps, plus $40,000 for Brooks House. Should we consider looking at that as well? We also received a ballpark estimate if we were to go out and start over using the data that we have, the base layers that we have, if we have a new design firm, but not including the Brooks House at about 210. So in short, looking at about $120,000 to stay with the current designers, 210 if we pivot, and then Brooks House at a 40 on either case. With that information, we are thinking about having another joint meeting to discuss where we should go in next steps so that they can get some more direction. But I think regardless, anything, it will be a sprint if we are to get this on May town meeting at this point with the redesign. Okay, on August 4th, the town had a bid opening for the Wallace Park Court Resurfacing Project. We received one bid, but that's okay because it was under what we had budgeted. So we're performing our diligence and entering a contract in the next few weeks. The access control project is underway. You might have seen some, the keyed locks have been changed out and the access reader systems will be installed in the next several weeks. In the last manager's report, I reported that the town had opened bids for the cleaning of municipal buildings. Unfortunately, the lowest bidder declined to enter to the contract, so we've now issued a notice award to the second lowest bidder. Terms of recruitment. We have vacancies in the position of dietary aide at nine hours per week, meal site worker at 36 hours per week, payroll and benefits coordinator at 32 hours per week, executive assistant to the town manager and select board at 36 power hours per week, equipment operator at 40 hours per week, videographer two to 10 hours per week, although we announced one, there's one more, and land use director will be posted this week. Board and committee vacancies. For appointed boards, agricultural commission one vacancy, APDC one, cultural council two, associates for green communities two, historical commission one, personnel board five, PAC one, associate member on the ZBA one. Here's a new one. I heard that we have a representative, well, new to me, not to you probably, but representative to the First Middlesex Small Town Collaborative, which is, I believe, being run out of Senator Cronin's office.
I think it's Representative Scarsdale.
Scarsdale's office, okay. So that was Josie Gilchrist, and so we need, it's a select board appointment to that. We need a new person there. And then we received an application for the Montezlucet Regional Vocational Technical School. We have one application in, but we haven't formally announced that it's open and available. That's an appointment of the select board, school committee and moderator. So I am announcing officially, if anybody is interested in serving on the Montezlucet Regional Vocational Technical School Committee, if you want to send your applications to the town manager's office, and then we can convene these three groups, or two groups and one person for appointments. We have some vacancies in elected boards. So we have, for elected boards, board of assessors has one, planning board has one, sewer commission now has one, and trust fund commission has one. And that concludes my manager's report for the evening.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the town manager?
Have you reached out to the planning board to see if they're going to appoint a representative to the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee?
No, but I can.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you again. Moving on to new business. So first, we have the vote to set date for fall special town meeting and the opening and the closing of the warrant. So the proposed date of special town meeting is November 18th, 2025. The date for the warrant opening is August 20th, 2025, which is just tomorrow, and the warrant closing is October 2nd, 2025 at 5:00 PM. So those are the three things that the select board has to do for town meeting. So first, we have to call it, we have to set the date and the time, and then we have to open and close the warrant. It's typical for us to just open the warrant the next business day and then close it according to the timeline that's in the bylaw, which I believe is 47 days from town meeting. So that's what this calendar is following. But other than that, this is pretty procedural. Any questions on this?
No.
Okay. So I will move to call a special town meeting for Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Lunenburg Middle High School Auditorium and open the warrant on August 20th, 2025, and close the warrant on October 2nd, 2025, at 5:00 PM.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, up next, discussion and warrant articles to be sponsored by the select board. So this is going to be an ongoing conversation, just to decide what the board wants to initiate and bring to town meeting so we can start getting it drafted and reviewed by town council. And in addition to that, I believe the town manager has a list already, so we can start with that list to go through it and see if there's consensus with those as well. Do you want us to just start there?
Sure. So I've been kind of keeping track as I hear things coming along. So we have easement to take the license for the ramp for a rebutter and make that license permanent through an easement for 21 Main Street. There's been discussion about merger of the historic commission and APDC. Tony Scullimbrini is already talking to council on that. There's been some talk as we are doing the design for the Eagle House for their parking, and the playground that's there is likely going to need to be moved for that project. There's been talk, although it doesn't have to happen at this town meeting, of transferring Kids' Kingdom from the school committee's care, custody and control to the select board's care, custody and control. There was a previous town meeting vote for funding for a TCP roof, so to move, but that was specific to the part of the building that's being decommissioned, to move that funding to another portion of the building, changing to a postcard for town meeting. We have updates to the SAP, repealing the sick leave bank and merit award program from the SAP, not repealing them as programs, but just repealing them from the SAP. And we know we have the MBTA zoning act. So that's what I am tracking so far in addition to the normal standard articles.
Okay. Any of that stand out to anyone? Do we want to discuss any of those tonight?
Should we discuss the postcard idea for the warrant? Because we, as a board, haven't talked about it.
Right. Yeah, so it would be good to know, first of all, that it's something that we want to actually bring to town meeting. I think we should. I think it's a good idea. I think the warrants are very cumbersome. So what do you guys think?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did like the unique aspect of having, receiving that in the mail. It was nothing I had heard of before. But I do like the idea of it becoming, it is still, it would still be available to those who want it.
Right.
And the QR code. So I think, I think that's a good compromise, so.
Well, I think we need to make, in my opinion, a hard copy available to people. They can call and have it mailed to their house, maybe, if they are unable to go. We can have it at the adult activity center, you know, different places, the library, that it could be picked up and they can request a hard copy.
Right.
Not everyone knows what a QR code is.
No.
And I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, you go.
And it's important that we're just putting it before the voters to see what they.
Yes. Absolutely. So we're achieving the same thing. It's just not going to be as expensive because mailing one to every single registered voter in town is very expensive, $7,000 or something like that?
Around that ballpark, yeah.
Yep. And it also shrinks the timeline for getting the warrant out, and that's a pain. Every single town meeting, you run into it and it's really an issue, so.
If I remember right, I think we estimated, like, it extends the opening of the, like, three weeks.
Yep, three weeks, yeah. So.
Yeah, so before went, you know, to whoever's going to draft the language, this board had never discussed. So I don't, do we need to vote?
Um, no, I don't think so.
You need a, you need a, you'll need a formal vote when we're finalizing it, but I think, I think to start drafting, drafting the language, I see, I see where potential vote may be.
Right, yeah.
That was a long list. I don't know. Is there anything else on that list that we could?
I think there's things on this list that we have to do, right? Like, so I think the easement for, council's frankly already working on that language, but the easement for the ramp, we have to do. I know that Mr. Scullimbrini really wanted the historic commission and APDC merger language to be on for the May town meeting. We felt very, oh, he is joining right now.
I know, I was going to say, very uncanny, but continue.
I'm talking about you right now, Mr. Scullimbrini.
I think you knew that.
So, so he's already been having some discussions through council office hours with town council about how to make this work. There were some, maybe some misunderstandings that town council had that in the last office hours, Tony was able to clarify for him. So I think council was a little worried about a path forward with the language, but I think Tony got him there.
So I do want to clarify, who has the intent of actually submitting that warrant? Is the intent that the select board would do it on their behalf, or is this just something that you're tracking to actually, like, get completed?
So at the, the final decision on any warrant article.
Well, yes.
Is the select board's unless it's petitioned.
Sure.
So you always get that final vote, but the historic commission is at this point championing it until it's submitted.
Thank you.
Then I think that Kids' Kingdom, you know, whatever, that's probably not critical path for this meeting, but, you know.
I guess, is there anything that we needed to discuss tonight?
Tonight, anything?
Or you to start drafting?
I think.
Whoever to start drafting.
If there's anything that's not on this list.
Right.
Okay.
That, that we're not tracking.
The intent is so that we can get ahead of getting it drafted and reviewed, so.
So the state had provided Lunenburg with additional Chapter 70 funding. I don't know if that would go through us or the school, but I think there should be some communication with the school department if there's going to be an article for any additional funding from Chapter 70 to go to the schools.
So I will say that there's typically, well, I don't want to speak for typically in Lunenburg for a special town meeting because I haven't been here, but there's typically money articles, bills of a prior fiscal year, budget adjustments that are a vehicle for motions, like that. But I would just say additional appropriation article.
Okay. Anything else that we want to flag early on, Glenn?
Well, just with, did you mention that the Kids' Kingdom would be transferred to the select board as opposed to, like, Parks and Rec? So why wouldn't it go to Parks and Rec?
Eventually, it probably will. But it's, as it gets moved, it's just easier for the select board to control and shepherd the process. And then, and then once it's moved, then you transfer that to the Parks and Rec Commission. Good question, though.
Anything else that we want to flag tonight? Okay. All right, discussion on bring your own bottle policy. So this request was made by a business owner of, I believe, a nail salon, was it, who is interested in pursuing a BYOB type of situation at her salon, which I recently learned is a thing that happens sometimes. But the way that our policy works right now is that it's tied to a common vic license. So, you know, you have to be a restaurant or whatever that serves food in order to serve alcohol. So this is on here for us to decide if we want to modify that policy to allow for BYOB in establishments that don't have a common vic, that don't necessarily sell food. So right now, this is just up to a discussion. So I'm just really looking for initial reactions from board members on this and whether it's something we would want to look into.
Absolutely.
So what does this, what would this open up as far as other businesses?
So what does this, what would this open up as far as other businesses?
So, so right now, well, everywhere, BYOB is not regulated by the ABCC. So all BYOB is regulated by the local licensing authority. So the way that we have it currently, if you don't have a common vic, if you're not serving food, there's no option for you to have a BYOB. The Select Board could open that up to all business establishments. You could open it to certain business establishments. You could index it to other type of licenses. So instead of just a common vic license, that you hold some other type of license, you could make it that it's just spas. I mean, so you can make it as limited or as broad as you would like. But again, the ABCC is not going to be operating in this space. This is just us controlling what occurs. I will say that I think that I have concerns about alcohol that is not being provided by the purveyor of the establishment without food. That, that, that linking of the food and alcohol is critical, but that's my opinion.
I'm also kind of concerned about this, because, I mean, you go to your appointment, you're drinking, who knows how much alcohol, and then obviously you're getting back in your car and driving out and continuing on with your day, because let's be realistic, that's how everyone gets around in this area. So I don't know if I really like this either, and that's sort of where I'm at right now.
And if people are of age, bringing in the alcohol, I mean, just the enforcement part, piece of it. Have you experienced of this in other towns before?
Um, I have, not in a town that I've worked in.
Okay.
I've only had, you know, restaurants that have BYOB, because they don't have a liquor license.
I'll say, I've gone to salons that have a wine and pouring license, that they're controlling it, that they're pouring.
That, yeah.
It's a little better than BYOB, but.
I do have concerns with this. I think I would definitely need more information to support this.
Does ABCC can regulate the pour license? Okay.
I, I mean, I just see it as a bit, a business-friendly decision in this. The request was really well articulated with all the, you know, the standards of serve safe and whatnot. But, yeah, I just, I do just see it as, you know, as a responsibility of those who are partaking, partaking in the, in the salon and consuming, consuming the alcohol, that, you know, there's no control over them having it before they leave. And, you know, I just, I just see it as a, a business-friendly.
Yeah, I, no, I understand that side of it, too. And I tried to get there, but I just couldn't really get past the reservations that I have with alcohol in general in this context. So that's just sort of where I ended up landing in my initial reading of it, and I haven't really been able to move past that yet, so.
So I guess specifically to the board, you know, this was put on here because I didn't want to do a whole lot of research and a whole lot of work on this, if the board was not inclined, right, to go in this direction.
Yeah.
So I'm still not really seeing where we are about putting resources behind this endeavor at this time.
What's involved in getting a pour, what, what's called the pour, something pour license?
Pouring license?
Pouring license. I was going to bring that up, too. I would be more interested in exploring that than a modification to the BYOB, but.
As an initial step, do you want me to go back to this licensee and say, are you interested in trying to see if you can obtain a malt and wine?
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
I don't know, food's probably going to come into play there, but food's going to come into play.
Yeah, and a spa, just, like, then you have the Board of Health, probably, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't know. It's one of those things that, on the surface, sounds great, but it's like, oh, what is that opening up?
Right. I mean, you're taking on risk with that.
What, what's the other side of that coin?
Right. So, I don't know, may, maybe you could have that conversation and do not extensive research into it, but.
I just don't want to be on a fool's arm, frankly.
Yeah.
So, I really, if, I mean, I, if I could just get a straw poll of research or not re, like, are we committing?
I'm a yes, I'm a yes for research. I, I think it would be at least, you know, a good, a good message to send to the business community, that we're open to trying to make things better.
I am curious to see, you know, what are other communities doing? How many communities? But that's, I know that's going to be a lot.
That, that's substantial research, and I would say that that's, the minority of communities are having a BYOB at a salon.
Right. And that's the thing, that you would, you would know for sure if this was more commonplace, and, you know, that's kind of enough for me, and, go ahead.
I can only think of salons in one community that they have, they're pouring.
Mm-hmm.
I feel like we have a lot of stuff on our plate. The town manager has a lot of stuff on our plate for this year, and I, I don't support the research at this time.
And then we just open up the fall town meeting warrant, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. And, you know, like I said, I didn't really get there. It sounded like we had reservations from three out of four members here, although, Glenn, you know, I fully understand where you're coming from, and, you know, I agree with that point as well, but for me, it just didn't really outweigh the risks, so.
Could this be something that the public could take to an article for a fall or spring town meeting?
A warrant article, it wouldn't probably be rise to the level, no, it has to be a Select Board policy. Select Board is the, is the licensing authority. But, I mean, certainly, maybe, maybe this applicant, I guess we'll call her a business owner, maybe she wants to help and do, if, in a conversation, maybe she can, has the capacity to do some of this research.
Yeah, I'd welcome that.
Yeah, so I'd have that conversation, yeah.
Or just, let's park this for now until maybe.
Yeah.
Some freedom, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Get an executive assistant.
That would be great.
Sure.
Interviews on Monday.
Come up for air.
Great. Are we all on the same page on that, then? Okay, great. All right, thank you. All right. Up next, ratification of the Collecting Bargaining Agreement with New England Police Benevolent Association Local 353, FY 26, FY 28. We're skipping over this because some of the legalese is still going back and forth among the attorneys, but we, I believe, are in a place where there's agreement. So we just need to finalize that, and then it'll be back on the agenda. Recommendations to the Master Plan Steering Committee on the Master Plan Update. So we got this sent over to us. It was sent, I was away for military training for two weeks, and I just got back, and I truly still need time to really read it. But I just put this on the agenda so that we could just have it on our radar and know that they want, pretty much, well, actually, pretty much all boards and committees in town to really submit their feedback. So we will go through everything that's in this draft of the master plan, and they are looking for that feedback by October 1st. So we still have some time, but this is here really just to introduce it and put it on everyone's radar so that we can really start looking at that. And then we'll start going through and compiling our recommendations. I don't know if, Glenn, I know that you're the liaison. Do you want to?
No, I think that, I'm new to the, new, as in that role, but I think you hit the nail on the head. It's just those, those categories to the right on the spreadsheet are what they're looking for, you know, specific answers to. And they have it sectioned out for the, the areas they think are specific to the Select Board.
Gotcha. All right, great. Okay, so we'll pick that up, and we'll go through it.
So Jim, I don't know if, is that the chair at all?
It is, yes.
I don't know if she has anything to add.
Yeah, sure. So Kim, we see that you're on Zoom. If you'd like to add anything, you may. If not, that's okay as well. I know, I'm just calling on you out of the spot here.
Oh, no, not a problem. I actually joined right at the perfect time for this. So, yeah, no, not, pretty much what Glenn said, you know, we're soliciting this feedback for the draft recommendations to all the various committees, and we did outline, you know, which committees we thought were appropriate for which recommendation, like which ones it might impact. So in that case, yeah, we're, we're looking for feedback, specific feedback for the questions that are on the top of the spreadsheet in, like, row A. And you can just go along for each recommendation, answer those questions, you know, and feel free to ask any questions you want to Glenn or myself, you know, for, for clarification, because there, there, a lot has gone into it, and we've tried to plan for, you know, new eyes, but, you know, not being a new eyes myself, it's hard to anticipate every question you might have. I did forward a presentation that the consultant over-undered provided to us last week. That kind of gives more of a visualization of the draft recommendations, so feel free to also take a look at that. It might provide some context as well.
Okay, great. Kim, while I have you, I'll ask any members if they have any questions about this process, if there's anything in particular. Okay, not seeing any, so thank you so much, Kim, and we will get this feedback to you as soon as we can.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, of course. All right. Up next, authorize the town manager to file applications, execute agreements, and other necessary documents associated with the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Grant to the town of Lunenburg for the asset management inventory and planning project. And I am just going to have you explain this one.
Yes. So this is a, this is going to be a long, a long thing to read, but what this is, is you might, you might have recalled that I reported previously on a grant that we were receiving to continue the work on our stormwater asset system, to do the mapping of, of all of the system. It's $99,000 project. I think it's, like, $69,000 is being covered by the grant, and the remainder is covered by town funds. But there's a really long legalese that you need to vote in order for us to sign the paperwork. So that's what this is. I'm happy to read it into the record, and then somebody could just make a motion.
I was prepared to read it.
Is that, you want to read it? You can go right ahead. That's what the.
Well, any questions first, and then we'll make the motion. Anything on this?
Uh-uh.
Okay. So I move, whereas the town of Lunenburg, after thorough investigation, has determined that the work activity consisting of asset management, inventory, and planning is both in the public interest and necessary to protect the public health, and that to undertake this activity, it is necessary to apply for assistance. And whereas the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts pursuant to Chapter 21 and Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws of the Commonwealth, Chapter 21 and Chapter 29(c), are authorized to provide financial assistance to municipalities for the purpose of funding, planning, and construction activities relative to water pollution abatement projects and drinking water projects. And whereas the applicant has examined the provisions of the Act, Chapter 21 and Chapter 29(c), and believes it to be the public interest to file a loan application, now therefore be it resolved by the Lunenburg Select Board as follows, one, that the Lunenburg town manager is hereby authorized on behalf of the applicant to file applications and execute agreements for grant and/or loan assistance, as well as furnishing such information, data, and documents pertaining to the applicant for grants and/or loan as may be required, and otherwise to act as the authorized representative of the applicant in connection with this application. Two, that the purpose of said loans, if awarded, shall be to fund planning activities. And three, that if said award is made, the applicant agrees to pay those costs which constitute the required applicant's share of the project cost. Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? I'll just point out that I think that's the longest motion that I have ever made or heard. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Any signatures on that that we need to do?
No, you authorized me to sign. Thank you.
Oh, gotcha, yeah. You're right. I just read it. Okay. Up next is a letter of support to legislative delegation in relation to the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health Retirement System. So we'll read it, so we can, you know, go through any modifications. But to the town manager, do you want to just give the TLDR on this?
Sure, I will do my best. So this is the request that's coming from the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health. For those in the public that aren't aware, it's, it's a district, it's a, that was formed way back in 1918, and in 1967, they became part of the state's retirement pension system. But the employer contribution portion was never properly built, and so that was discovered in 2014. So they forgave everything prior to 2014, but from 2014 to present, they have this growing liability that has not been resolved. So this is, they've been told, over the past, they've been working on this since 2014, they've been told the legislative fix is what is necessary. They did file legislation last session, but Representative Scarsdale, Senator Eldridge have supported legislation this session, which does two things. It resolves the issues with the outstanding liability, but it also changes the way that their payments are calculated going forward, that they're based prospectively on employees and actuarial studies so that they can budget appropriate for them instead of being retrospective. Any more details than that, I'm going to have to have the executive director here himself to explain, or I can happily ask for some clarifications if there's questions.
Understood. Okay, so we can read through this and see if there's anything we want to change. Support for H44, H2960, and S1836 in relation to the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health Retirement System to the Legislative Delegation of the town of Lunenburg. The town of Lunenburg is a member of the Nishoba Associated Board of Health, a regional health district which allows our community to pool its resources and provide robust public health services to residents. Starting in 1931, Nishoba has provided well-trained, full-time staff to small communities like ours. The Nishoba Associated Boards of Health were allowed to join the state retirement system in 1967. In 2014, the system discovered that they had not been billing Nishoba for the employer portion of the pension provided to their staff. The current staff at Nishoba were unaware of this responsibility and obligation. In their discussion with the staff of the system, they were informed the system needed to bill Nishoba for the pension expense as provided in the law, which allowed them to join as a non-commonwealth entity. They were further informed that any changes to the monies owed or method for calculating the required employer portion of the pension expense would require legislative action. As you are aware, Nishoba has been working during various legislative sessions to try and get legislation passed to adjust this situation. And last year, it became close, it came close, but the bills, which would have provided the necessary relief, did not pass. Nishoba, working with the state's treasurer's office and the Office of Representative Scarsdale and Senator Eldridge, advocated to get new legislation filed to address this situation. These bills would provide relief in two ways. First, the bill would change how Nishoba contributes its employer share to the fund. The contribution would be paid on current staff salaries at a rate set by the system's actuarial staff. This simple change would allow Nishoba to budget for this expense during the normal budgeting period. Nishoba has been working to resolve this payment method for more than 10 years, and given the same time since the discovery, the amount of the payment has created a situation that is threatening their financial viability. The second type of relief would address back payments owed to the system. The bills would provide some additional relief for back payments and would allow the system to work with the affected entities. Nishoba is not the only organization trying to address this situation to make these payments. We are asking for your support of the following bills designed to achieve the necessary relief Nishoba needs, and so it's three bills again. The Department of Public Health has been encouraging the formation of shared service arrangements to help local public health departments pool their resources to provide improved services to their communities. Nishoba has been doing this for the 94 years, that's, there's a typo right there, that's why I reread this, has been doing this for the past 94 years, I think that should read?
Mm-hmm.
And the relief of this pension matter will allow them to remain a strong voice for public health in our community for years to come. Thank you for your continued advocacy and support of the residents of Lunenburg in partnership, Select Board. All right, any feedback on that?
How, how has it not been addressed since 2014?
They, the legislature has failed to enact the legislation, or, or it has failed to get out of committee.
It's very possible when you require anything from Beacon Hill, but.
And they haven't, they haven't budgeted for that expense at all, or?
What they're trying to not do is to not shift it onto the member communities at this point, but it may get to that point. In our, because we, basically, the way it works is we receive an assessment from them that we pay over to them, and that assessment would be markedly increased if this fix isn't achieved.
And how would that, was that assessment part and parcel to our decision to get involved in that? Like, is it, is it economically feasible to stay in it or have our own Board of Health?
So I, so we would, let me answer that in a couple of different ways. So regional boards of health, these regional arrangements do get a lot of support from the state. It is an area that they are trying to support through public health excellency grants. We would not be able to provide the same level of services without the Nishoba Boards of Health on our own for the same costs, because what you get is you get a registered sanitarian, you have a food inspector, you have, so registered sanitarian to the public, that's who's doing a Title V. We have. that's who's doing a Title V, we have the public health nurse, they run clinics, we wouldn't be able to support that level of operations for that same dollar value. And likely, probably even with the increase, it would still be the more economically advantageous route. But in terms of, did the town of Lunenburg consider the pension liability when we first affiliated with the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health? I believe that this, I believe that this affiliation has been for decades. So that would probably have been well before the 2014, it would definitely well before the 2014 date.
Could, could a member of the public compare it to like the OPEP, the Other Post Employment Benefits?
Yes.
Obligation?
Yes, exact, exactly, similar. It's just that it's not health insurance, they are covering, but similar.
All right, anything else, or do we want to make a motion to approve the letter as it was modified with that one correction I made?
I think I saw, after my name, member is misspelled.
Member is misspelled?
You are right.
You're right, I'd, oops.
Okay.
Thanks. Did you get the other one too?
Yep, the past, yep.
Yeah, I'll learn the same document probably.
It's still misspelled.
Oh.
It's, okay, there it goes.
Yeah, I was gonna say it has a little delay.
All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve the letter of support to the Legislative Delegation in relation to the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health Retirement System as read.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, the motion passes unanimously. All right, and last, we have acceptance of gifts, monetary donations, and there is only one, we have a gift of $500 to the Council on Aging from the Lunenburg Friendly Senior. Any questions on that? Is there a motion to approve the gift?
I will make a motion to approve the gift of $500 to the Council of Aging with gratitude. Oh, the council is spelled...
I know, I saw.
Okay.
I just didn't call it out.
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, the motion passes unanimously. All right, old business, discussion on tri board meeting of the Select Board, Finance Committee, and School Committee. So we have our next meeting next Tuesday, and it's gonna be in this room, it will be broadcasted live. Sorry, I just got a weird pop-up on Zoom, which took my attention away, but yeah, next Tuesday, and it's going to be here in this room. Any other discussion?
I have two questions on that, one, will there be Zoom?
Yes.
And two, will you three be able to attend? Because I, if I can, it will be late, so we won't have a quorum if...
Right. I also, we can talk about that now, but I was going to ask, once we get to upcoming meetings, I do want to check for quorum for pretty much September. So are we gonna have a quorum on Tuesday? Brian and Glenn are gonna be here.
I plan to be here for every foreseeable meeting.
Great, okay.
Summer's over.
Yep, perfect.
Yes.
Oh.
Do you go back?
This summer's officially over.
Yeah, I'm back to work.
Oh, the tie!
All right, perfect, so it looks like we'll have a quorum next Tuesday in this room. Any other discussion? All right. Discussion on sick leave bank policy, we're gonna skip over that tonight. Accept tax investigation report as submitted. Is there any discussion on this? I think we had a lot more context into this with the presentation earlier today, and the intention, since, you know, this investigation was committed by the Select Board and they produced that report, we just have to approve it as it was submitted. So that's pretty much all that's intended here. So, any questions or comments, or is there a motion to accept the tax investigation report as submitted?
So the report as submitted hasn't changed, right?
Nope.
We had questions, hasn't changed?
Mm-hmm.
I, I won't be voting to accept it then.
Okay.
I will have it in my report, but the Board of Assessors did review it at their last meeting and did have recommendations or corrections.
Okay. I'll just point out, you know, it's more so a product of the investigation team and the process that took place to finalize the product of it. Just leave it at that, but...
I guess if I could just add a comment here, so I think that the, the board really has three options. So you have a report, you can do nothing with it, and then that's it, we're just gonna probably take it off the agenda, there was a report that was written, it exists. You could accept it as, as submitted, it doesn't mean you're, you're just accepting it, you are accepting the receipt of it, you are not agreeing with it, you can have all sorts of carve-outs that as-is, you're just accepting it upon receipt. Or you can undertake the work as the new board to make the modifications, but I, I don't know that the prior board members are gonna make those modifications. So, so I think that relying on that probably is not a path forward, just those other three.
I, I would just add that I, I am willing to accept the report, I, I just hope that the Board of Assessors also put in their public response that, of their response.
Sure.
I missed member M. Key's comment, what did you say?
Without any changes in answering our questions, and now hearing that the Board of Assessors has corrections, I, I mean, fine, it's written, it's not gonna change, but I, it's not correct or complete, or...
Right.
I, I, and then just take it off the agenda, because it's not going to be, no one on the current board was part of this investigation.
There you go.
Which is really unfortunate that it never, the report was never finalized.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, so. I don't think I got a...
No, I agree, I agree with those comments, yes.
Yeah. We can just not vote on it and remove it from the agenda, I'm totally fine with that as well.
That was option one.
Yeah.
That you presented.
Is that where we're landing at?
I, I am curious to know what the Board of Assessors had to correct though.
All right, well...
If they, if they vote to do something with it, or...
Yeah.
Approve with comments, I don't know, accept with comments, whatever.
Okay, so, we're gonna move on from that then. And amend use agreement for the temporary use of classrooms at T.C. Passios by the Shapiro Educational and Behavioral Consultants, so this is just modifying the term of the agreement to extend it to the end of the year, is that correct?
Correct.
It's the only actual modification there.
Was there any consideration to upping the, the lease at all? Because I know there was some unsurprised, you know, unexpected costs.
With the cleaning, yeah, so...
Wifi too, or something?
Well, that, yeah, wifi is unrelated to them, so I think, I think we will be looking at overall usage for the TCP building, because there's other folks that want to use it for days, for events, and we don't really have a plan for that. This is temporary. Once we're decommissioned, that portion, and we have a better handle, I think we will be looking at those increases. At this point, it's, I, I think that Shapiro would, would rent the space from us for the foreseeable future if we agreed to it, so I think that there's room for some conversation there, but that's also why we're just taking it step by step, just through December 31st at this point.
Do you think the heating will be okay there?
Oh, the heating is more than adequate.
Okay. Because I know there was concern in the summer about the, well, but I was concerned about the temperature in the summer getting too hot, and...
They have the opposite issue.
Right, right.
I think we do have some, but to, to your point, we do have some other kind of costs associated with that building that are coming to light with users that we'll be exploring more fully, I think probably in the context of the tri board meetings when we talk about facility budgets.
Okay, well, that's it.
Oh, was there a vote on that?
Nope, that's why I was just gonna make the motion. I move to amend the use agreement for the temporary use of classrooms in T.C., at T.C. Passios by the Shapiro Educational and Behavioral Consultants as described in the memo that lays out the amendments.
Second that motion.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, the motion passes unanimously. Minutes, I don't think there are any, right?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Warrants, we have some warrants, looks like... Okay.
Are the minutes still in the works?
Huh?
Are the minutes still being...
Oh, yes, it's, yes. So I do, yeah, good question, so I have a lot of minutes that have been drafted by the minute writers that need review.
Okay.
I'm happy to drop those as-is, knowing that, if folks want to look at them, but I think that they would benefit from at least a first review. And then I do have two folks who stayed on, who are still continuing to draft minutes.
Oh, good, okay, great.
All right, we have one accounts payable, oh, sorry, I didn't see that one either. So we have two, so this is an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $454,861,077.
Another.
And another accounts payable warrant in the amount of $21,046,31. Action items, any action items? Oh, yes. Okay, good point, because I forgot, I forgot it earlier, so this is gonna move on, but I can, we can still ask. So, I believe what happened is that someone reached out to you today, is that what happened?
So, so last night?
Yeah.
I was in the Economic Development Committee meeting.
Okay.
And it came up that they're looking for a Select Board member liaison or appointee to that committee.
Right. And I believe it's, they're having quorum issues, and they would really be of assistance if we could do this, and since we found out last night, wasn't reasonably anticipated by the chair, I do think it is totally fine if we vote on that tonight. So, is anyone interested, Glenn, looking at you here?
I did, I did watch the meeting, so...
Yeah, okay.
He was prepared.
First of all, would you be interested in doing it, Glenn?
Yeah, of course, but with the disclaimer is that list is awfully long of the, you know, the committee assignments or whatever, so, as long as there is an appreciation...
Is awfully what?
Long.
Oh.
Extensive.
Yes.
But, yeah, I was, I was the ad hoc member from the, the planning board, so...
Okay, so you're willing...
And as, I was trying to garner some support for the BYOB, you know?
Oh.
Have an appreciation for trying to help the businesses, so, yes, and if anyone wants to review the list I have and wants to take on a few things, it'd be fine.
Sure, yeah, if you want to send it over, I'd...
Good luck.
Wait, the list of...
All my assignments.
Oh, that, no, I don't want to see that list. I misheard what you were saying. Okay, so, anyone opposed to voting on this tonight? I think we're totally fine with it. Okay, so I move to appoint Glenn McLeod as the Select Board Representative to the Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and then for just best practices, what we'll do is, you'll see that on another agenda, just so, on a posted agenda, so you'll just vote again, but...
Sure, yeah, I'm fine with that. Okay.
It'll be the same vote, Glenn.
I should have said, if anyone wants to, they certainly...
All right, committee reports.
Oh, it seems if you think, want me to go first?
Yes.
So, Agricultural Commission, they, their next farmer's market is Friday, September 12th, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the TCP. I will be away for that one as well, so three out of the four, I was unable to, to attend, but the first one I went to was very successful, I haven't heard any reports on the most recent ones. Their agricultural fair scheduled for September 27th from 10:00 to 2:00, also at TCP. They're actively trying to get volunteers to bring tractors of any size, shape, age, for a touch, a tractor aspect of it. So you could send an email to farmersmarket@lunenburgma.gov if you were able to assist them in that endeavor. I will mention this just because it's related to the, the planning board, but the zoning Board of Appeals at, you know, a complete and separate entity, but related. July 23rd, Zoning Board of Appeals approved a special permit request, relief to allow townhouse, the use of townhouse located on New West Townsend Road. So it's a very, very first step in a lengthy permitting process. The ZPA simply approved a special permit request for use, and again, use for townhouse. The permitting process will bring this proposal before many boards, mainly the planning board for a common driveway special permit, stormwater management permit, and A and R approval not required, that's how they split up the land into buildable lots, Board of Health, Fire Department, Conservation Commission. So it's an area that's in excess of 30 acres, about 500 feet off the roadway, abuts town forest and conservation land on the Fitchburg Line, Willard Brook State Forest and West Townsend Road Conservation Area. It's also adjacent to the former Lottie Tree Farm. The area is located behind an existing home located at 850 New West Townsend Road. It's intent to create four additional lots behind that residence, that would be the A and R, and it would be the proposal, which is basically just to present the request for their special permit, would be five-unit townhouses on each lot, so that would be for a total of 20 units. Two of those units would be affordable, quote, affordable. So, all are preliminary proposed as three-bedroom, so essentially, again, it would be four, four units, and each unit would have five, four buildings with five units each. So they would have a common driveway, and what was presented was not a detailed construction plan, it was simply presented to highlight the townhouse use. There is stand, state-owned land to the north, and the O'Brien Project property, abuts the property to the easterly side. A couple of abutters expressed concerns at the proposed use as presented to the ZBA, four members voted in favor, one member voted in opposition. So it's these type of developments that make it, you know, very important that people watch the planning board and, as well as other meetings, to understand what is proposed and have input, either for or against. These type of developments are the result, in my opinion, these type of developments are the result of calls for affordable housing and, quote, housing crisis talking points. If I was a landlord, landowner and/or developer, I would embrace these talking points as well. So it also falls in hand with the, as mentioned earlier tonight, the MBTA Communities Act, which does require the town to zone for 240 family-friendly units. And again, there's plenty of information out there on the, the planning board has done several outreach sessions, you can find those on YouTube to familiarize yourself with the MBTA Communities Act, and that will be coming up on the next town meeting. Planning Board on their July 28th meeting, they have a new, new administrative assistant that seems to be working out swimmingly. Land Use Directive position will be, has, will be posted in short order, and I know the, the town manager had indicated she was hopeful that there is even a potential candidate in the, in the...
Hopper.
In the hopper, yeah. They've mentioned several times the importance of Brian Gingras, the building commissioner is such a huge asset to them in the absence of a planner. They do, as mentioned, need an additional man, member, and my personal thanks to Matt Allison, I, before becoming on that board, he was one of the inspirations for me to get involved, I appreciated his opinion and input on the board, and it will be missed, and would like to make sure I thanked him for his long-term service, and hopefully in the future, he will rejoin or some other commission, it would be great. They had public hearings on 1083 North Field Road, special permit for a common driveway and stormwater management plan, continued to August 25th. Another hearing, public hearing for 260 Fallula Road, that's right on the, actually, a good portion of that's in Fitchburg, partial in Lunenburg, that was approved. And 430 Mulpus Road, vote was taken to correct some stormwater permit performance guarantee account. Open space was covered a bit already from the town manager. They did vote on the first right of refusal, again, for 222 West Townsend Road. They did vote on the first right of refusal, again, for 222 West Townsend Road, declining their recommendation. They do not believe the Select Board should execute the first right of refusal for that property, and that's come up several times because of filing errors. Their next meeting will be September 3rd. Master Plan Steering Committee, I think that was pretty, pretty well covered here. MMPO, nothing to report, we are, there is a meeting tomorrow for 1:00 PM. And I have nothing for MART, Library Trustees. And the EDC, I did, I can pre-comment as, you know, a former member. They were discussed quite a bit about the meet and greet, I do think that's a, a very valuable event. It's, it was in its infancy and grassroots initiative. It seems like, and unfortunately, I was away for the, again, for the two they had, so I was not able to, to participate in those, unfortunately. I do think it's ready for its, its next phase. I know previously they talked about the, the need for a budget, and I, I think going down the road, that, that is something, and it's, you know, for that event, and it wouldn't be a, a ton of money. I do like the event of the cons, having the event offsite, I think that does change the dynamics of it as soon as you become, this, because there's talk about having it in a, a town building, but I think that, you know, it's an ongoing conversation and, you know, particularly at low, it has been at Low Places Ranch, and I've always wanted to check that place out. I mean, how many places, how many communities have like ranches? I think something like that should really be, you know, embraced, and so I do like, I do like that idea. And I think the informal aspect of it was, you know, the, the secret sauce. Formalizing it and having it be under government control will kind of minimize its allure, but, you know, again, that's an ongoing discussion. I think the success is a, a private event where public figures are invited and encouraged to the town, by town manager is, is a, a great model. That way, there's a lot more flexibility for the planners as opposed to an actual government-run organization. And there's really, there was talk about postponing the event, and I think it's, I think it's proper to at least have a, a placeholder event, agreeing with the new chair, Josie, as well as the Planning Board Chair, Matt Brenner. And I, I always figured I would never go as long as you did on your reviews, but I think I did it.
Well, I'm short today.
First of all, I just want to point out, you were right, I did not notice how many liaisons you had in all that committee report.
Yeah.
Your volunteerism is truly commendable.
Yeah, yeah, blah, blah.
I would feel, I would feel worse about it if I didn't know that you already watched all those meetings before you became the liaisons. But if you need us to help out, of course, we can, we can look at that.
All right, I have, the school committee met on August 6th. They did announce that Chris McNamara is their new business administrator, they were, that he was hired. They, the majority of the meeting was a workshop, though, on the roles and responsibilities of the, the school committee as well as the superintendent. The Board of Assessors met on July 16th. They had 12 abutters lists, they had 70 motor vehicle abatements, chapter land monitoring, 91 total. There was 61 in forestry, 29, sorry, 61 total, 60. Forestry had 29, 35 were agricultural, and 27 were recreation. There were nine liens that were absent, missing applications. They were filing at the Register of Deeds. They had removed seven due to a lack of response. Four were sold and there were issues on rollback taxes because of the liens, and the new owners were contacted and, as well as the attorneys. The growth for FY '26 was 27,758,770 assessed value dollars. Assessed values were 398,615, not complete with personal property and less than last year, it was less than last year. They're continuing to do inspections on chapter land. There was also talk about 41D, the elder exemption. There was one applicant so far, but it was a September deadline, and they'll go through those on executive session, so nobody's in the public with their information. They also met on July 29th, and that meeting was solely on the response to the Select Board report on the investigation. So I didn't go through every single detail, I'm hoping that they'll come out with a report and that we'll be able to view that, so I didn't want to present any of that tonight. And then they also mentioned, again, that they have a vacancy on the Board of Assessors since the election. They also mentioned that the, there was a flyer completed, too, on the, the senior exemptions, too, that Mr. Alonso was helping out with. Turned out great, and they were ready to print about 100 to start and, for the senior center. They also met on August 13th. An update from the assessor, there was 12 abuttered lists requested, 17 abatements on the vehicle excise tax. There was also some munis support tickets put in to try to get support on munis. They're checking with town council on the properties with the no liens. September 1st is the residential estate exemptions mailed out, they have a list already. The chapter land inspections were continuing. Basically, they were, they talked about it tonight, too, about 10 to 15 years, things haven't been done, so people are more surprised about the inspections. They brought up obsolescence, which issues about, is about 10 to 60% that are discounted. And then the senior center presentation was on YouTube on the exemptions, and then the September 3rd is their next meeting. And again, they're also looking for a new member, and they're gonna do a final review of the master plan at the next meeting as well. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Finance Committee met August 14th. I saw part of the meeting, actually, I was dialed in, but kind of multitasking. They did start to review the town finance policies and discussing them, and they will continue to do that in sections at future meetings, so I assume once they're done, it'll come before this board. Talked about the, the tri board meetings upcoming, which, as was stated, next one is next Tuesday, Tuesday, the 26th. Finance Committee's meeting outside of the tri board is September 11th, and I need to watch the rest of the, get more details. Anything else that may have been discussed that's relevant? Stormwater met August 7th. So we've been working with CEI to try to come up with a view structure based on impervious area. We learned at the August 7th meeting that the data we were working with had impervious data that was from 2016, so it's nine years old. The state does not have any updated impervious area data since 2016. So we're kind of back to square one, because we want to use, of course, the most accurate, up-to-date data. There are a number of properties that have been built in Lunenburg since 2016 that were not in that database, so. So whether the task force had a goal of bringing a stormwater utility to town meeting in the spring, that just became more difficult. So we'll see, still going to try to do that, but it is an aggressive timeline, so. Our next meeting, unless we call one before that, is the end of September, and I'm blanking on the day. And that's all I have to report.
All right, thank you. I've not had a chance to catch up on mine since I returned home, but I will, and I will give mine at the next meeting. Upcoming meeting schedule, so we are meeting next Tuesday, August 26th, for our next tri board meeting. And are there any other absences in September? I will be out for what will amount to two weeks for the board in mid-September, so I will miss, I believe, I need to check on this. Definitely September 9th, potentially, or actually, definitely, yes, September 16th as well.
I will miss September 16th.
Okay.
That whole week. I'm unavailable.
Okay. So we may have lost a quorum for that week?
Okay.
Okay. Just that one week?
I think I emailed, right?
Yeah, okay.
What about the 9th? Everybody else for the 9th?
Yeah. So you're good for the 9th? Okay. Anything else? No? Okay, so that might be it. Okay, so it's just the 16th, then we'll have to work around.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you, guys. Public comment, is there any public comment from the public? All right, not seeing any. Any public comment?
There's a hand up.
Oh, I believe that's Mr. Rogers. All right, Mr. Rogers, are you there? We can't hear, you might need to unmute.
On the telephone? What do you press, star? Doesn't he have to be a star something on the phone?
Star something, he should know those. Yeah, I don't know, maybe if you can Google it real quickly, and then we'll go to Mr. Burden in the meantime.
Yes, thank you. Just one last comment I wanted to make. Instead of individuals posting things on Facebook about our family, why don't you give us a call at 978-582-9255 and ask us what's going on? I think that'd be more appropriate, without giving us an opportunity to even post anything on Facebook to, to defend ourselves, to tell you what's going on. It's a trashing, and it honestly, it's individuals that post those kind of things are, I can't even say the word to our mind, but it's incredible.
He muted, but maybe he needs.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Burden.
I muted, yes, I said I was, that's all I had to say, that's all I said, I said, that's all I have to say, so I did mute myself.
All right, well, thank you for your public comment. All right. Mr. Rogers.
Star six.
Star six is how you unmute.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rogers, we hear you now.
Oh, thank you. I'm not a, I'm not a friend of technology. Thank you for, for taking my call. I, I heard some discussion about Kids Kingdom and wondered, because I was involved with that, as were a lot of people, what, what is the movement afoot?
No, that, it'll be a future agenda.
Yeah, it'll be, um, we'll, we'll cover it in the future, Mr. Rogers.
On a future agenda?
Yeah.
On an agenda, or I can talk to him offline.
Yeah. All right, Mr.
It's fine, I'd, I'd like to be involved, but the fact of the matter is that I, I want to give you a little bit of history, and I'll be brief. The Pearson family years ago lost a son, and they wanted to honor his memory, so they did a Kids Kingdom in back. That was the first one. And then when the Lawrence family lost their son, they, they agreed to expand the Kids Kingdom, and that's how the current Kids Kingdom is, is in place. So I'm concerned that, that I thought I heard that the school was going to take back some land and something would happen to the, the Kids Kingdom, and I, I just wanted to make you folks aware of this, because it's not the type of thing that, you know, can just be shuttled from here and there. And I will also tell you that the Lawrence family was extremely generous, and we raised money for the Kids Kingdom near the school, and we, they were benefactors to the, the revamping of the, the playground over in Waylam. So I, I'm, I'm very sensitive to what is transitioning in this particular area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Any comment?
No, thank you, though. Well, maybe, let's see. Are there any public comments from the board?
I have, you guys have anything? I have one, I just want to say, last week was the final town band concert of the, ooh, feedback. Last week was the final town band concert, and I want to thank the organizers and Mr. Archimbo and all of the members of the town band. I managed to go to all of them, except I think two I wasn't able to go to. And Mr. Archimbo's stories in between us, the, the songs that they performed were, were very entertaining. And I think it was, it's just a great, like, small-town thing to sit outside and, out on the grass and listen to music. Some I recognized, some I didn't, but I still found myself tapping my foot and whatnot. So I think it was, it's a nice summer tradition that, that we have in town, and I want to thank all of those who are involved in, in putting that on.
Thank you. Heard, any other comments from the board? Any public comments from the town manager?
No.
No, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Rogers.
It's unclear, it's unclear from my perspective as to what will transpire. Will somebody get in, in touch with me regarding the Kids Kingdom?
Sorry.
Mr. Rogers, we're having a very early discussion that will be discussed as agenda items. It's very premature to have anything, but I will say that there's, this is, this is just really about funding for the design of the senior center parking lot that was already approved at town meeting, and steps about potentially moving the location of Kids Kingdom to another location. And there's some steps that we'll need to take to move it, and we're looking at all that, but it's premature at this point for a full discussion, I think, before the board.
Well, just as long as the, the powers-to-be that are working on, on this are sensitive to the situation. That's all I'm concerned with.
Yes.
All right, because, you know, I think I gave a reasonable explanation as to what was involved, so. I look forward to hearing more about that particular aspect of, of that discussion. The, the other thing I would like to, to ask about was, as it dealt with the Shapiro folks, who are lovely people and doing a great job, did I hear correctly that, that the town is about ready to, to lease some classroom space to that entity? And then what specific entity is it? Is it, is it the Passio School or the middle school, or what is it?
Mr. Rogers, I, public comment, we can't go back and forth like this, if you'd like, I'd be more than happy to reach out, we can talk. I'm sure we could have a call with the town manager as well, but thank you for your public comment, Mr. Rogers, and we are going to continue on.
That's fine, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to.
No, not at all, not at all. All right, have a good night, Mr. Rogers.
If the town manager or whomever gets to me, that would be great, thank you so much.
Fantastic. All right, I asked everyone if they wanted to make a public comment, and with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 9:13 PM.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously, it's 9:14 PM, and the Select Board is adjourned.
All right, hang out for signature.